And recording a member's present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one Woods County, Oklahoma certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view with the location of the meeting.
Number three, administer the oath of office to board member, Mr. Shane Hanson, seat number one. Mr. Hanson. I Shane Hanson.
I Shane Hanson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I swear or affirm.
I swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education of Alba Independent School District.
As a member of the Board of Education of Alba Independent School District.
Hashtag zero zero one. Congratulations, sir. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. You serve our district with distinction.
Thank you.
We're going to have you double work on our voters. Number five, actions. Reorganize the Board of Education, president, vice president, clerk, and deputy clerk. This always springs up on seats here, doesn't it?
I know.
It's like, did we just do this a year ago? Yeah, we did. Or did we not? Were we even here a year ago?
We were here.
I don't think we missed a week.
Yes.
Did you meet in May?
I'm just trying to think.
I'd like to make the president.
What we need or not.
I think we've done six of office.
I think we only missed April, didn't we?
Well, I can't remember.
I can't remember either. I am, I'm still in quarantine. I can't even remember. Well, we will do them one step at a time. Is that correct? Okay. Nomination are now open for the Office of President of the Board of Education. Let's nominate Jane McDermott's place.
A second. Let's just take one vote, but we'll.
Okay, for all of them? Okay. Okay. Any more nominations for the Office of President? How about Vice President?
Nominate Tim Slater, Vice President.
Second. More nominations for Vice President. Nominations for Clerk. More nominations for Clerk. She's good at that office. She did a good job. And nominations for Deputy Clerk. Nominate Larry Parker.
Second.
Okay. Nominations have been made and seconded for our slate of officers. Jane McDermott, President, Timothy Slater, Vice President, Karen Kane, Clerk, and Larry Parker, Deputy Clerk.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Saying you have one more year to get your doctorate.
Ready.
One more year.
Beyond ready.
Okay. Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Six point one, addition of new items of business to the agenda.
There on that.
Six point two, minutes of the April 5th meeting and the April 19th, 2021 special meeting. Approval of the financial report, and approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund inter-account transfer, approval of the child nutrition report, and approve of the following items as circle. So we'll go back to the minutes.
Okay, I'm, six point two, I do not see any errors in the minutes when the April 5th, April 19th meeting. Move on to item six point three, our financial report, two attachments. The first attachment, our investments, which is Manning. Our second attachment will open up. This is our monthly comparison chart. As you can see that obviously continue to be down in most of these areas, three of our five local revenue areas. I do want to mention that we did see, and probably did present this at some point, just the monthly collections in each of these areas. And we have seen a slight uptick in collections from gross production all the way to account revenues. So hopefully that is a sign of economic recovery. If you look at the second page to the attachment, that is a comparison of our revenue and expense. I really want to point out the top graph is FY '21, bottom graph FY '20. Really comparable each year, from year to year. Our staff has done a really good job from an expense perspective. When you, when you take those numbers out and look at that happen from a table perspective, from a graph, you can really get an idea that our staff has met the challenge of reduced revenue by reducing expenses. And so I appreciate their work on that. Still a lot of challenges out there in front of us financially, but our staff has continued to be, become more efficient as we've gone through this school year. Agenda item six point four, our activity fund report. Activity funds, we haven't seen much movement out of those this month. Just a couple of fundraisers that have happened are banned. Their Yeti fundraiser, and then, so you will see some changes in their activity account. And then also the plant sale. FFA did their plant sale, and so there's some revenue that was generated from the plant sale. Six point five, we have two activity fundraisers that I want to bring to the board tonight for your approval. The first is an FFA fundraiser. You can open up that attachment. That is a fundraiser to help Mr. Nation's medical costs. Kiss the Pig fundraiser. And so I would ask the board to approve that. And also a softball fundraiser. We have Warren Chamberlain, former University of Oakland softball player, that we put on a pitting clinic here at our softball field. And so these are both late arrivals, but very worthy. And I would ask for the board to approve those. Six point six, we do not have any inter-account transfers. Six point seven, our child nutrition report. Have a couple attachments on there that you can look through. Just wanted to point out a couple of things to you. If you look on our revenue, possible revenue, if you look down at forty-seven twenty and forty-seven ten, you can see that we have overcollected in each one of those, and that is a result of federal reimbursement and free lunches throughout the school year. We have received a little bit of guidance as to our next school year. We don't have any clear-cut information, but what we do know is through the month of September, next school year, breakfast and lunches will also be reimbursed. So that has been a very good thing for our child nutrition fund. If you look at our expenditures, you can see that, one of the things I want to point out to you that I think you'll notice is from a payroll perspective, we've seen an increase in payroll from year to the next. And that's not in addition because of hiring. That is in addition from moving salaries from our general fund into our child nutrition. And then six point eight, there are no new items in circle. So are there any questions about the consent agenda?
I have a quick question.
Uh huh.
The fundraisers that are, I know the two, the one that we're approving, that will be run through the, the activity account. The softball would be run through the activity account at the school. The medical fundraiser, is that run through an active, you set up like a new fund for that?
No, that'll run through that FFA fund, and that'll run through that account. That'll make that, that activity account will make that donation to the institution.
Oh, perfect. Wondered how that would work.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Your motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda. Those items referenced in six point two through six point eight, there are no circles. Is that right?
That's correct. A second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number seven, the note to approve purchase order in conferences for the following funds for fiscal year 21. We have seven point one, the general fund as referenced, seven point two, building fund as referenced, and seven point three, child nutrition fund as referenced.
Okay, we'll start with seven point one, our general fund. The first attachment of our general fund purchase orders. So a few of those that we'll go through. First order number three seventy-one, School Board Association. That is for the conference this fall. Purchase order number three seventy-three, tech education supplies. Those are reimbursable supplies through state funds for Misses Woods class. Purchase order number three seventy-six and three ninety-six, those are some repairs to bus number seven, activity bus. Purchase order number three seventy-nine, to start lumber. That is a reimbursable expense also. That is to upgrade the countertops in the home classroom at the middle school. Purchase order number three ninety, that is a repair to the, or replacement of our chiller, which cools our auditorium library. We will begin work on that this summer. That is also reimbursed funds through our ESTER money. Purchase order number three ninety-five is another reimbursable purchase through our ESTER money. Those are ThinkPads and monitors for teachers in the event of mobility. It will also provide a little bit easier mode of instruction with its ability to connect to active panels. Purchase order number three ninety-nine, chickens and price. Those are cleaning supplies. We are beginning to purchase not only for this summer, but then also for this fall. The second attachment is payroll for substitutes out of our general fund. Agenda item seven point two, building fund. We have two purchase orders out of that fund, Gagnon Plumbing and Rose Plumbing. Those are repairs at the high school and the middle school. Agenda item seven point three, our child nutrition fund. Two purchase orders out of that fund. A repair to the water softener cafeteria, and then our purchases of commodities. I want to again thank our administrators for their diligence when they look through these purchase orders and assign these, bring these down. Are there any questions about our general fund seven point one, building fund seven point two, or child nutrition fund seven point three? If there are none, I would recommend you.
Make a motion we approve seven point one, seven point two, and seven point three as referenced.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Agenda number eight, superintendent's report.
Okay, agenda item eight point one, our resignations, retirements, and reassignments. We have some resignations to go through. Mrs. Mead is down there at the bottom of it, so it may not be in order with your attachments. Mrs. Mead is retiring or resigning from her virtual education. And I want to thank Miss Mead. That was a real challenge that we had this year, was how were we going to meet the needs of our students that didn't feel safe at the time coming in our buildings. And Miss Mead did a fantastic job. And just really appreciative of the time that she spent. A lot of one-on-one time, a lot of outside time from the regular workday. And so we really appreciate her. She provided a lot of guidance through a really challenging time. And then we also have two other resignations. Mrs. Weisswerner from Cheerleading and Coach Collins from our cross-country. Appreciate the work both of them, both of those ladies have done for both of those programs. Outside circumstances have kind of changed their ability to be able to perform in either one of those duties. Retirements. Crystal Starbuck will be retiring from our Title I Teacher of Washington. Mrs. Starbuck is a fantastic teacher. We all saw that with her application and nomination as a State Teacher of the Year. And so we will certainly miss her, but she is ready to retire and ready to do her own thing, and we're happy for her to be able to do that. We also have a retirement from Debbie Stroud from the middle school. Ms. Stroud has been a longtime employee for Alba Public Schools, and she is ready to retire also. And so we wish her the best of luck, and we appreciate what she has meant to our students. We have a paraprofessional retirement, resignation, excuse me, Randy Henry at Washington. Randy has done a fantastic job. She was a teacher's aide and scored multiple positions at Washington, and we will certainly miss her. And then finally, Mrs. Franco at Washington, longtime cook. Mrs. Franco has done a fantastic job, and we will miss her, and we wish her the best of luck in her retirement. Eight point two, our, some communication. I want to, first of all, mention some legislation. There are numerous, numerous legislative bills that the board will have an opportunity to review new policy this summer. From professional development requirements to some new mandates on testing that the School Board Association will be sending out, and we will review those this summer with the hopes of adopting for the fall. Strategic plan. Three, two years ago, my, the years are kind of hard to even, to even remember, but I think it was three years ago we began a strategic plan, and were able to work with our community, engage them in what they wanted for their school. And COVID and the turmoil of the last year and a half has taken us out of that mode. So I'm happy to report to the board that we're going to begin re-engaging the community with forums, with committees, looking at those action steps that they developed, and how we're going to achieve those goals. And so, May 20th and 21st, I believe, we will be meeting with goal area chairs and site teams to restart that strategic plan. And I can tell you that we're all excited about that. We're excited to refocus back on school, and back on our academics and our student programs. And then finally, we have had a great spring. Our baseball team will be hosting regionals this spring, this Thursday, excuse me. Our state track team will be traveling to Catoosa on Friday. Many student athletes involved in those, and they've done a great job. Our one act is performing tonight at six. Mr. Broad does a fantastic job, and we know that they will perform well and do well in their regional and state the coming weeks. So we have a lot of great things happening with our students. Before we move on, I, last week, Mr. Feely, I believe it was last week, attended the tourism committee meeting with Coach Gore to talk about a basketball tournament to host next year. It's been, and he could probably tell you, many years since we've been able to host a tournament, and so excited about that. So Mr. Feely, if you want to say a few things about that tournament next December.
We partnered with Northwestern and taking some teams from the Northwestern tournament, matched them with some of the teams that we've been able to secure, to create a tournament that will be here in Alba. Part of the tournament will be at Northwestern, part of the tournament will be here. And our hope is to have a JV tournament going on simultaneously with that in our, in our old gym. And we've had, tourism board was generous enough to help us get that started by, part of the thing that we had to do to get this going was to lure teams. And we'll be with some financial help, and so we will be paying those schools a thousand dollars a team, or, I'm sorry, a school to come to the tournament. And then we also have some help from some of our banks to help us put new scoreboards in our old gym. And so we're really excited that our people are not going to have to drive three hours to go watch a tournament.
Thank you, Mr. Feely.
What's the date?
I believe it's the December 10th through the 12th. That's all I have.
Can you review graduation? Do we have anything? I mean, we know the date.
Yes. So graduation will be at Northwestern. I believe it's at three o'clock. There is a, Mr. Smith.
That's correct.
Three o'clock. Limitation on tickets and seating?
Well, kind of wait and see what Northwestern does. There is a limitation now of 15. I don't think, I think Northwestern's not going to add one, from what we've been told.
For their graduation Saturday?
Yes.
There's no limitation.
So we probably won't have to limit seating. It's outdoors.
It's outdoors. I just wondered if we have an indoor, do we, whether we have a plan?
Gym will be the alternative.
Three o'clock on a day?
I think it's a day.
That's right.
Sixteenth of May is a lot.
I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to make a question a little bit. We won't meet again till we...
It is May 16th, three o'clock.
Maybe sixteen to three o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
I do know that Northwestern has cited that they're changing the layup. It'll be new to you, but the stage is going to be in a different position than they've had in the past due to COVID, so that both sides can, you, speaker and the graduates. So that may apply to what we, I don't know.
I think it may be a lot like you did last year.
And save it out.
On the north end and the south end.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I did have all those.
Yeah, a question back on the strategic plan.
Yes.
When we started that, and I know it's been a long time ago, the people that helped us set that up from the OSSBA, didn't they agree to come back and help us review the plan a year after?
Yes.
Are they going to do that?
So that is what this 20th and 21st will be a reflection on what we've accomplished. And it will also recalibrate those dates, because we set action steps of dates that, you know, we wanted to get to this goal at this time, and obviously, we didn't meet many of those. So we're going to reflect on what we've accomplished, and we'll report that back to the board beginning in July. But then we'll also recalibrate those dates and report that back to all of you, so that we move forward. But yes, they are coming back up to facilitate those discussions.
And when you have those community forums, if, since it's been three years ago, what if some of the goals have changed, or some of the perspective has changed? Do you incorporate that in the plan?
Sure. I think that, so the idea behind, we want to honor what people originally wanted from that plan. But I think, as we all know, things have changed in the last two years. And so you're going to see some surveys that will come out even prior to us meeting with them about the climate of our school. And we're going to have to talk about facilities, and things have changed with regard to facilities in the last two years. Things have changed financially. And so that, those changes have to change the direction you take. So we want to honor and investigate those action steps that our community has asked us to. But we're also going to have to maybe add some, or park some in the parking lot, and look at those later.
Thank you.
And some of the people that, facilitators are no longer with them, correct?
One facilitator is Tyler Bridges' superintendent clerk. But there will be new staff. You know, they have been limited to on-campus. This, I believe, we will be the first school later to have been able to leave and go serve.
That's true.
We anticipated this wouldn't be till August, and they just got the okay a couple weeks ago that they could leave campus and come back out and do reflection with schools.
And we'll just pick up with the exact same people that were in place.
Correct.
So do we have any retirements, or?
There will be some teachers that we will have to replace on those site teams.
Yes.
There will be some replacements to teachers because of retirements, yes, or resignations.
Will some of the kids be replaced? You had a lot of students, I mean, you had graduation. I didn't know if that would affect that at all.
So we had students that were originally a part of the strategic plan, the development of it. Those students didn't serve on any site teams or goal area teams. So there won't be necessarily replacement, but to give you an example, you know, when we started looking at student programs, we had students be a part of those committees and get their feedback. When we, when we talk about any type of forum, we want to have students that are involved in that discussion, or survey them to get their opinion. So were they directly on any site team? No. But will they, will they have input? Absolutely.
Now, all of you are invited to come to that, correct?
Yes.
All of us, at any time, we might kind of coordinate what times we'll be able to come, and spread ourselves out as to who could be at what. I know Mrs. Kane and I went to a lot of the last one.
Yeah. Where would the meetings be held?
They're going to be at the middle school.
Middle school.
You will enjoy, I, I was, it was very enjoyable.
It is.
And that it was met with such enthusiasm by the teachers, administrative community. I encourage all of you to try to go part of it. It will, it's very uplifting. I was, I just thought it was wonderful.
What do you think, what do you think the timeframe will be for this meeting? Will be?
It will be on the Thursday, which is the 20th, I believe, will be from 1:00 to 3:00.
Okay.
And Friday will be 9:00 to noon.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll kind of keep that in our minds. Thank you.
You go.
Item number nine, we don't need any, basically. Nine foot one, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve Mary Tyree as an adjunct instructor for one hour of aeronautics for the 20, 21th, who is?
So this was another, I think, root professional of COVID and what happened last February. Ms. Tyree should be an adjunct instructor for aeronautics. And although she is a certified science teacher, and we have a certified pilot in that class, the state still requires, according to coding, that she be adjunct, and she's not specifically on her certification for aeronautics. We adjunct teachers with Rupp Meyer, with anatomy and physiology at the career tech, and we've also done that with Dixie Meyer in our chemistry. So this is not out of the norm, although it is something that we should have done at the beginning of the year. And so I take responsibility for that. So I would ask the board to approve Mary Tyree as an adjunct instructor for one hour of aeronautics. of aeronautics.
So.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
9.2 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Employ the Certified Teachers Listed on Exhibit A for the 21, 22 school year.
All the teachers that you see presented have been evaluated by administrators using the TLE, using the TLE. Those have been multiple evaluations and observations throughout the year, and I would recommend their approval.
I make the motion that we approve the certified teachers listed in Exhibit A for an 14, 2.2 school year.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 9.4, no, 9.3, I got that one up there. Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Employ the Certified Teacher Listed on Exhibit B on a temporary contract for the 21, 22 school year.
So a temporary contract can be held on a teacher for two years, and I would recommend that we have one teacher that you can see on our attachment, Whitney Smith, Whitney's done a great job, but I would recommend to the board that we keep her on a temporary contract of the 21, 22 school year.
So move.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
9.4 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Employ Dave Foster as Head Football Coach effective May 24, 2021.
So, we wanted to make sure that we were clear with our extrajudy salary schedule with these coaches getting work this summer, and so we have, are asking the board to approve this major report today. Coach Foster and Coach Gore, they are, have summer schedules and summer plans and are ready to get started working with our student athletes, so I would recommend to the board that we approve this and thank you. So move. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 9.5 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Employ Chris Gore as Head Girls Basketball Coach effective May 24, 2021.
And this is the same item, just Coach Gore. Very fortunate to be able, Mr. Feely and Mr. Smith are putting together and getting to, our parents to get to meet Coach Gore last time, and so she was at meet-in, and again having, talking about summer plans and summer discussion. And again, this just helps us comply and add them to our extrajudy assignment schedule in June, I would recommend.
So move.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number 9.6 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Following Allen School District Athletic Camps and Summer Pride Program for the summer of 2021.
So this is an exciting, I think, agenda, of course, is to get our kids back in our facilities and be able to have some of those activities that we were unable to do last summer. First attachment is our Summer Pride. Mr. Smith has worked with Coach Foster on our Summer Pride, there's been no changes to the cost of this, it is still $20 per participant for a 54 family. If you look at the second agenda item, these are athletic camps, again, Mr. Smith has worked with Mr. Feely, Coach Gore, Coach Stratt, Coach Ball, Coach Foster, to get these dates set, and again, there has been no change to the cost for the athletic camps, and so I would recommend their. Make the motion we approve. Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number 9.7 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Following Summer School Classes and Instructors. 9.7.1 Summer Learning Academy from June 1, 2021 to June 30, 2021. Can we do this all in one motion? 9.7.11 Tiffany Motta, 9.7.1.2 Tabitha Brothers.
So our Summer Learning Academy, we're excited to get this back up for our students. Summer Learning Academy helps comply with REECA, it helps us to identify some of those students that they need, need just a little bit of boost, and it's for our elementary students, and so I would recommend the approval of the Summer Learning Academy and also Tiffany Motta and Tabitha Brothers as the instructors for those classes.
Make the motion we approve 9.7, 9.11, and 9.7.2.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
9.7.2 Extended Year Special Education Services from May 24, 2021 to June 30, 2021. Instructors 9.7.2.1 Ella Gilchrist, 9.7.2.2 Randy Peace, 9.7.2.3 Malani Kherm, Paraprofessional.
Extended School Year Services may be required according to the individual education plan for students, and so these teachers provide those services in the summer along with Mrs. Lovelace will also help facilitate those classes. Appreciate all of these and Tabitha Brothers, Ms. Motta, working with our students over the summer, I would recommend approval of the Extended School Year Special Education Services.
Make the motion we approve 9.7.2 Extending the School Year for Special Education Services and the three individuals referenced.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
9.7.3 Extended Year Speech Pathology Services, like, from May 24, 2021 to June 30, 2021, and with the instructors, 9.7.3.1 Becky Houston, 9.7.3.2 Hattie Potter.
And again, this Extended School Year Services and Speech Pathology Services allows us to comply with the IEP for these students, and so I would recommend.
Approve to approve 9.7.3 and the two individuals referenced.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
9.8 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Following Renewal Contracts and Membership Services for Physically Year 22. 9.8.1 Alcohol Drive Testing Incorporated, 9.8.2 Clearwater Enterprises LLC, 9.8.3 Keystone Food Services, and 9.8.4 Oklahoma State School Board Association.
Okay, we'll start with our first ADT alcohol year testing. We've been doing this service for the last even years, and this service randomly comes out, bus traffic blocks every year once it's invested. Anyone that operates a school vehicle. Clearwater Enterprises, that is our energy firm that we contract out, three of our sites, middle school and high school, an indoor facility, but negotiated a little bit better contract this year, it's a 10% reduction. This has been a cost savings for the district, and so I know that with, with bumpy bread and in February when we saw energy prices soar, it was mitigated somewhat for our district by using Clearwater. Clearwater was one of the firms that sold us our gas and took care of us as a customer, and so although we did see an increase, it was not like many other schools, and that was significant, but it wasn't at the rate that other schools did. They've been a good partner to work with. Keystone Food Services, this is a renewal of our contract, coinciding with the prices, so their price increase to our district increases according to what the reimbursable rate. So, we stand really nothing but gain by continuing this contract, and we've also, you can look at it from a financial perspective, but you also look at it from a nutritional perspective, and we've been able to serve our kids really good food, really quality food, and we only anticipate that improvement in that as we're able to have salad bar and as we're able to do some things that we normally have done in school. 9.8.4 School Association Membership, this is a part of our Assembly Meeting that we use for our board meetings, it's our membership meetings, and also superintendent evaluation. If there are no questions on these contracts, I would recommend their.
I make the motion we approve the renewal contracts on 9.8.1, 9.8.2, 9.8.3, and 9.8.4.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Following Board Policies, BBH, VFA, BJ, DOC, AGBA, S. They're all right there for us.
Okay, so as you're, as you're looking through these, first of all, one thing, Ms. McDermott and Mr. Hanson were meeting and going over these policies for the rest of the board. There, I mentioned it earlier, there are many now, policies that we are continuing to review and will read back at later dates for. The first policy that you look at here is the Board Members BBH, and that is just really a revision of the board development opportunities that are going to require, and so these are required by law for compliance, and so when the OSSBA makes these adjustments and makes these revisions, it's important as a board that you consider these for adoption. BJ is the Office of Superintendent and provides revisions to that. Our Reduction in Force Policy talks about using your OKTOB and your evaluation method as a part of reduction in force, it's not necessarily your years of experience, and then also we have Open Records Act. So, are there any questions that you have about these policies? They are lengthy, but I can assure you that your policy committee and myself have gone over these and gone over the policies. If there are none, I would recommend their.
Make the motion we approve policy as referenced in 9.9.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number 10, any new additions?
No.
Signing of documents approved by earlier action, obtain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I so move.
Okay. I'll second, I'm sorry.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.